Partner City Council will come to order if you please stand for the public.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentations this evening. We do have time allotted on the agenda for public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak on an item does not appear on our agenda. Or one that is on our agenda and not part of a public hearing, please come forward. That being the case, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a council member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Item three. How would council like to proceed with consent agenda items one and two?
I move we approve consent agenda items one and two. It's up to you.
Motion, Broxerman, second. Tomorrow, do we approve consent items one and two? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Consent item number three, consider authorizing the interim city administration to execute a contract agreement with Pepsi Beverages Company to provide all beverage supplies and services within Gartner Parks.
I didn't really understand the matrix, how the pricing works and what all was involved in that.
Sure. Be happy to explain that in a little more detail. Basically, with the bid process, we ask for unit price for the products that we typically purchase for the concession stand. And those items include things like the bag in a box, product that we use to mix the bottled drinks. Cases we purchase sports drinks as well as bottled water. So we ask for unit pricing for each of those because that helps us no matter how much volume we purchase from year to year, we get unit price and that's what we expect to pay. We also ask for a cash back bonus or cash payment, if you will, per year. That's pretty typical from beverage companies to do that for agencies that purchase a lot of volume. So that's what we do for the pricing. We then take the most recent year, in this case, 2011, and look at the total volume we purchased at each of our core concession stands. And we'll assume, just to estimate how much we'll purchase, we'll assume the same volume for the following year. And that's exactly what was done. We took total volume for each of the stands and then did the math to come up with an estimate on how many cases of water we'll purchase and how many cases of sports drinks or the syrup or bag in a box and so forth.
So where it says seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars?
Yes.
That's what we actually pay them and then they rebate four thousand a year?
Actually, they'll give us a cash payment of four thousand dollars. I believe it's in the contract, I believe it comes due at some point in the year. The cost of seven thousand dollars is what we're estimating that we will pay them for the product that we purchase.
But the net is seventeen minus the four, right? That's our net cost?
Correct.
And then where's the twenty-five? That's, I mean, I understand five times five, is that a misprint? Should it be twenty, since it's four thousand a year for five years?
Actually, that's correct. There's a mistake.
That's what, that was where I was getting thrown. And then the two hundred and fifty cases, is that of the syrup or the concentrate?
No, two hundred and fifty cases of, could be bottled drinks or whatever we may request for special events and things.
And those just, those aren't resold, they're for?
Correct. That's correct.
They're just like picnics and stuff like?
For special events could be the, for example, the Halloween Boo Bash or something where we may give product away or the Duaplon event, something like that.
And then who had the contract for the previous five years? Is that Pepsi else?
Yes, it was.
Oh, okay. All right, that's all. I'm sure that works.
Any other questions? Thank you.
How would council like to proceed with consent item number three?
I immediately approve consent item number three.
Second.
Motion, Harrison, second. Broxerman, that we approve consent agenda item number three. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. New business item number one, consider a petition for the formation of a benefit district for street water and sewer infrastructure to serve the new school's campus and to adopt a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Gartner, Kansas, setting forth certain findings in accordance with KSA 12-6A04, authorizing and providing for the making of the improvement in accordance with the findings of the governing body in the improvement district. Laura?
We don't have the petitions from the school yet. They're running on it tonight, so would you like me to go through the presentation and then you really can't act on it until the petition comes and is executed for them? I mean, they're approving it tonight also, but they're not here yet.
You want to delay? Are they planning on bringing it over?
Jerry Deaner emailed me last week and said he was planning on bringing it over. As soon as they act on it, we could be coming directly.
So can we move this?
Well, it's all tied together. So I mean, we can start the presentation and wait. I mean, I think that's.
Oh, he's on the way?
Okay.
Go ahead. Can I go ahead?
Yes.
So as soon as he arrives, we can act. But at the October seventeenth meeting in 2011, council approved an annexation agreement with the school that said if they pass a successful foundation election and receive funding, the city council agreed to create a benefit district and share its cost, subject to certain limitations, but essentially fifty percent unless there's a cost overrun. And any cost overrun goes a hundred percent to the school. And it's a fifteen-year benefit district agreement for that also. And they're supposed to be approving that now. There's an April second debt sale associated with this benefit district. The benefit district portion itself has to be issued by temporary notes first, up the Kansas statute. But in the end, we're estimating right now about five million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars by the time it gets through two years of temporary notes and then the bonding cost issuance. So that's an estimate, placeholder, should be a good one.
Is that new business item four? Are those bonds or these different types of bonds?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, that was just construction agreement. Yeah.
And then this is four. Well, they're all tied together. We're doing this in pieces. So the first thing you have to do is when they, this first step is to pass the resolution that should be to the benefit district. And the benefit district resolution spells out the things I just talked about, that you're in for fifty percent and it's a fifteen-year benefit district. And then it also spells out the improvements themselves for Grand Street and the water and sewer connections. Then the second business I want to talk about is for the city sewer expansion capacity where it's just ours, not a benefit district project. So I can keep going, I can do all of these up to today's five if you'd like. They'll, okay.
Yes, keep going.
So that one, new business one, was to create the benefit district. Okay? Now, new business two is what I was just discussing. In addition to the benefit district projects that was Grand Street and the water and sewer connections to the school campus, the city also has to increase our existing sewer capacity in order to serve that area. And that is one point three nine five million, again, through temporary notes for two years, that's the bonding cost. So we've already put all that in. The school district is not going to share in this cost, it's all the city's. And funding for this will be probably a sewer rate increase, it won't be any other way. And the funding for the other one is fifty percent. Fifty percent to the school, fifty percent to us, this piece is separate, it'll be all us. And that's all further into the issue.
This portion was the portion that we had planned on.
Right.
Is bring it in two years.
That's correct.
Had to be accelerated due to this project.
Right, and it's currently, the design should be finished in time to bid the project out in June. We should be in a position to start right away acquisition in the next month or so. But currently, HDR is under contract to design it. We've held our first public meeting, as we mentioned, at the update at the last meeting back in December.
And what is the expected cost? As I recall, was it five to eight?
Actually, we calculated all that today. Based on these financing schedules that I have now, subject to change, of course, this was all estimated, but I'll just step through it since I did it all. For the city sewer, this one point three nine five, plus the city's share of the sewer to connect, which is a much smaller piece, it was three hundred thousand or something?
Three hundred million.
Right there somewhere. Half of, the city, it was two forty-two. Our share was two forty-two, plus this one point three nine five million. Altogether, those two add up to four point six percent. And that's down a little bit from what we estimated in October. We said somewhere between five and six. So we're going in about four point six. And that is the total per sewer of two dollars and ten cents a month for the average user of five thousand gallons of sewer.
And we're, sorry, that's separate from what we already had built into the budget for rate increases, right?
This is only related to these projects, all things school related.
Yeah, okay.
Two ten, oh, sorry. Two ten for how?
Five thousand gallons. That's what we use as our standard average.
And so that's per month?
That's per month. That's the sewer piece, the two sewer pieces.
And so really, and when do those kick in? It's for two years, right?
It'll be, we'll be doing this in the 2014 budget cycle, so on people's 2014 tax bills that are due in December, your first half is due in December, that'll be when you'll see your first increase for your property tax that we'll be doing for the street and for the rate increases, it'll be January 2015.
But what about the utility increase?
January 2015. We'll pass it during the 2014 budget cycle.
But wasn't it, it's two years in a row, right? Wasn't it?
It'll be, there's other variables, but it'll be at least, it'll be several years. I can't predict that because there's other variables involving sewer fund.
It was only, it was projected to accelerate two years in advance. It was fourteen and fifteen, something we were going to do.
Right.
But I mean, there was only two years that were accounted for.
Well, the larger piece of the sewer, which is that sewer from the tracks down to the north, that was supposed to come online in 2016. So you've got two years where its full impact is in, and then after that, we were dialing it into the performa for the fund. So what's, all we've done is accelerate the debt service for the white drive sewer by two years.
But that is the two dollars and ten cents per month?
Basically, what Laura quoted was for both projects. I don't think.
I mean, is that going to be two dollars and ten cents a month increase in January 2015 and then 2016, the same increase? Because that's how it was.
There's other variables in the sewer fund, but making the assumption that this is period.
Right, but I'm saying just for the components attributable to the school district improvements. There was, as I recall, it was explained that there was going to be, we were basically accelerating something that would have a two-year impact, five percent to six percent.
The two dollars and ten cents includes the impact of both sewer projects.
Right, but that two dollars and ten cents will be added in 2015 and then again, there'll be another two thousand, or two dollars and ten cents raise.
You'll see that little piece of throughout, for the fifteen years.
So it'll go on in two years?
Yes, but it, but.
I mean, but the increases.
The way the sewer fund was, the cash flow was projected, the debt service for that larger project to the south, we were going to do that in 2016 anyway. So in the first year and the second year, that debt wasn't planned for in the fund until the school district came on. After that, the debt was figured into the sewer fund cash flow. Does that make, does that answer your question?
Well, I mean, I understand if you're saying that it's going to continue, but my understanding was that in addition to the five to eight percent annual sewer increases, right? I mean, this year it came down to, wasn't it?
Which is now four point six. You were talking about in addition to the ones that we do every year, every year.
Right, I mean, every year is going to be a five percent and sometimes eight percent on wastewater, right? And this is in addition to that.
Okay, let me try, let's see if this, if I can explain it here. For two years, you've got the impact of both white drive and the connecting sewer. Okay, two years out, then the only part that's in addition to what we were anticipating would be just the connecting sewer. So the rate increase has already covered it. The two dollars and ten cents, assuming that's the final number, it's going to continue for the full fifteen years, however.
The change.
The change, basically, the only difference, but after the third, beginning the third year, based on our proposed, our projected cash flow, the only additional cost would be that of the connecting sewers.
Also, so let's say, without the school district funding, we would have faced a five percent, and that's conservative, increase in sewer. And then, and now, we're going to receive basically a nine point six, again, a conservative estimate for 2015 and 2016. What happens in 2017? I guess is my, so in other words, there's going to be two years of ten percent or maybe larger sewer rate increases. What happens on the third year? And then I'll, then I think I'll understand what you're talking about.
Okay, on the third year.
Does it go back to five? Increase.
I understand, and assuming everything works out the way it's planned.
No other projects come on.
And no other projects come on.
But there's no significant expansion of sewer revenues.
Right. That's correct. Then very likely, you could reduce that possibly. However, we don't know three years out.
But we're not expecting on the third year to have our third ten percent increase, are we?
No. The way I understood it. Is that some component of that two-ten is the sewer we had not planned. So let's say that's ten cents. I don't know. So in 2016, we were planning for two dollars plus rate increases. What we're doing now is two dollars and ten cents in 15, going into 16, and 16 going into 17. When we go 17, we would have ten cents because the two was built into that year. That was assumed, assuming that's the way it breaks out. I don't know if that's the way it breaks out, but assuming that's the way it breaks out. So the two years of increase are moving ahead, plus the additional. The third year, the additional was planned, and we add in the school and, or the fifty percent, and then whatever rate increase is needed or necessary.
The portion just for the connection is only point seven percent.
Okay.
So it's almost all.
It's almost all.
The capacity expansion that we were already planning.
So we've got it, yeah. So you shifted that two years forward.
But somewhere to say, how much of my bill's going to go up? I'm going to say ten percent in 2015, ten percent 2016. And then 2017, it'll go right back down to only five percent increase. That's how it was explained to us. What is, what is different than, because I can visualize that document you gave us, and it said, basically, we're accelerating two years with the improvements earlier, two years earlier, and that there would be two five percent increases on top of the five percent increases that we had already planned, and maybe up to eight percent for wastewater.
Okay.
So I mean, I just want to know percent.
Well, interest compounds. So when you make rate increases, now you're adjusting the revenues, so I don't know that we can say that without playing the numbers out all the way through.
Well, I think another way to look at it too is, okay, year one, whatever year that is, okay, you got five percent, you bump up, now your rate, here's where you are now, your rate comes up five percent. Okay, it's now in there. You move forward, it's already in there, so if no other, nothing else changed, if no other costs changed, it'd still be there.
Right.
Right, but then there's other rates built in on top of it. But you'll see it come in the first year, but then your base rate is now that increased rate, so you move forward a year, and it's already there, it's already built in. And then as soon as you get into that third year, you can reevaluate, and maybe you don't have to. The five percent rate is already built in, you know, some of that projected increase is already built into that base rate.
Laura, in, is it 2016 or 2017 that we start seeing a substantial drop in our debt for these funds?
I have it all counted out.
I thought it was twenty.
It's like five years.
Yeah, so the way I understood is even with this, if we wouldn't accelerate this, we have other things falling off which minimize the rate increase. And because we have debt now and nothing's, you know, falling off, and we're advanced in this two years, is why we have the significant increase the next two years. So in the, in 2016, if we were to wait, we'd still be paying virtually the same amount, but from a rate increase perspective, because we have other things falling off, it minimized the increase.
New business fourteen, I'm getting ready to introduce a variable that we didn't have in October, where we're going to save a lot of money by refinancing the Kiltig Way, Kiltig Way, our treatment plan. So we haven't even talked about that yet, but it is majorly significant. So there's a variable that we didn't have in October, that I didn't have last Tuesday, that I have now. So that's why I can't say three years from now exactly what it'll be. There's more, there's more variables involved. Unknown other problems. Or unknown other good names. Yeah.
Right.
So they're not always problems? So anyway.
All right.
I have, I have the petitioner in here.
Mr. Deaner's here, petitioner.
Okay, so the petition is here? It was approved?
Yes.
So, you want to go back to new business one?
Just go back to new business one, yep.
Okay. Back to new business item number one. This is the acceptance of their petition, as Mr. Deaner said that it's approved, and the creation of the benefit district for the school property, as you agreed to in the annexation agreement from October. For the city's share being a fifty percent, subject to our caps, but assuming that they won't go over that, and there's the fifty percent. Their share will be benefit, will be special assistance. Our share will be rate increases plus the level of increases for Grand Street. We'll go back to all that in a minute.
We've got a petition that was included in the packet, and then we've got the revised petition.
Very minor changes. They added the word concurrent currently in one spot, they have the word line in a couple spots, and then the last paragraph where it says IWE, the undersigned, that had a little bit different language before, something about names can't be withdrawn and they changed it to IWE. And they're very insignificant.
Cosmetic.
Yeah, cosmetic, grammatical, cosmetic.
Questions for Jim.
So the fifty-one twenty, or five million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, was three hundred thousand more? What happened there? I'm just curious, would.
Three hundred thousand.
I mean, didn't we, we agreed to split half of four million, eight hundred thousand?
That, this includes financing, cost of issuance, interest cost for two years, I don't know.
So that's where you get the five million?
Right.
But we're not paying for that financing?
You're paying half of it.
But I thought, it says that they pay everything above that at a hundred percent.
No. The annexation agreement says financing costs of the benefit district, including without limitation, the cost of issuance and notes and bond and interim, interim interest costs will be divided by the parties, of course, and their share of the project costs is fifty percent. They're responsible for anything, we agreed to split the construction and engineering costs fifty-fifty and the financing costs fifty-fifty, and if the construction cost went over those previously identified amounts in October, they're responsible for any cost overrun above what we talked about. But the financing, you're in for fifty-fifty, subject to the annexation agreement.
So it's really half of five million, one hundred and twenty thousand? Was that the number we were given when we?
You were probably given the.
Four million, eight hundred thousand.
Because that was just the construction cost. Financing hadn't been calculated yet.
I mean, we knew we were going to have to finance it.
Yes. I, well, that's where we came up with the six, we did, we did do it down and dirty, where we came up with the five to six percent, and that, that was conservative, it was too much, it's actually less. And that was four point six for sewer and stuff. I mean, I haven't finished going through the numbers, but the sewer component was less than we anticipated. So we did build in, staff built in financing costs, these are actually better, better costs. When we gave you the impact, we were estimating the financing cost, but we didn't have the amount of principal.
But ultimately, the amount's five point one million instead of four point eight million?
Yes.
And the, the part that says traffic signal improvements if recommended by the city's engineer? Do we not know that yet?
Right. It's, we kept it in there, based on the engineering studies we've been running through by both Schaefer, Klein, and Warren, and our own traffic engineers, HDR. It's looking like the traffic signal on Center Street probably isn't needed. However, we're still carrying it until we come to a conclusion on that.
Isn't needed?
It's not needed yet. It will be needed at some point. At the, about the time it's needed will be the time we'll need to consider that extension we've talked about. Excuse me. And just a quick correction, the, the cost that we're talking about that we're presenting, it's not only construction, it's basically engineering and the cost getting up, it's just that the city's share of that principal cost caps off. But that principal cost includes construction, inspection, design, utility relocation, if we should, and other project expenses. It's just that for each component, we just cap, once that principal hits a number, we're done.
Actually, I have a breakdown here too of the estimated, how we got to those numbers. We gave you four point eight of the estimated construction cost, and then there's cost of issuance, underage discount, capitalized interest, temporary note interest paid from the bond, estimated bond cost of issuance, estimated city administration fee, which we get, and that's how you get to five point one if you want to. I'll do all the numbers, I can do it, they're all right here, but basically, that's the difference. There's cost of issuance, and like I said, we didn't add them to the principal amount we were discussing in October, but staff did include them in the impact that we told you, and we overshot, so conservative.
And this would be resolution number one eight six five.
internal improvements in the city of Gardner, Kansas, setting forth certain findings in accordance with KSA 12-6A04, authorizing and providing for the making of the improvement in accordance with the findings of the governing body and the improvement district.
Second.
I have one more.
Motion Harrison, second, Broxterman, that we adopt resolution number 1865. Mr. Fotovich.
Let's say that because we have a new council member, he did not agree to this, and now we have three votes against adopting this, what would happen at that point? I mean.
And we wouldn't vote.
Yeah. We had a sold debt. That would be catastrophic. We would not want to do this after we sold debt.
Right.
But we have not sold debt yet.
So, the annexation agreement happened to it, then?
Well, you'd be, I mean, it would, it would look very good, but I, as council, you haven't agreed to annexation agreement by both governing bodies. But I'm not, I'm not a legal person, I'm, I'm like, question for Mr. Hubbard to me.
Yeah, you've entered into a binding annexation agreement that provides for what you're doing this evening. This is really just a housekeeping matter to, you know, clean up what you agreed to in the annexation agreement.
But what would happen if we voted it down?
You'd be in default of the agreement, I suppose, subject to litigation by the school district.
I would assume we could be compelled to deannex the land?
Well, you'd be forced to proceed with what you agreed to in the agreement, or, you know, the other side would be, if they agreed to it, to deannex the land.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll find out then, won't we? Harrison?
Yes.
Broxterman?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Fotovich?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
1865 passes. On the floor, new business item number two, consider adopting a resolution number 1866, authorizing the design and construction of certain sewerage system improvements and authorizing general obligation bonds to be issued in an amount not to exceed $1,395,000 to pay the cost of such improvements, all pursuant to KSA 12-617 and 12-618. Laura.
This is the authorization to issue future debt for the projects that we talked about. It is just the city's project, the one that was accelerated forward two years, and the school district, excuse me, will not share in this cost, and it will be financed eventually by rate increase. And we take this part of the April second debt sale as well. So, by approving this resolution, you're authorizing that we'll issue future debt for this, for this project.
And if we vote this down, what happens? Jim?
Well, again, I don't have a problem with it, but my memory is, we agreed to build this portion of the sewer in order to be able to serve the school site, so again, it's a part of our annexation agreement, if I recall.
But this is for the funding, so?
Yeah.
That's a separate issue, I mean, right?
You agreed to build the sewer, so you have to have the funding to build the sewer.
And you can't, this actually starts the clock, when we can recoup our expenses for engineering and whatever, and if you don't do this, we can't recover any costs we already put into it.
If there were cash available, could we cash it out? Or are we obligated to?
You're not obligated to fill debt for it.
Okay.
We haven't, that's not part of this, this is how we fund it. We didn't talk about how we fund it, we just said we pay 50 percent.
So, so if we?
Not on this budget, but at the benefit district.
This is 100 percent, right. No, I'm saying on this one, if we, if we adopt a resolution to issue debt, if we are able to cash out, we're not obliged to issue that debt.
No.
But, but couldn't we also just not, I mean, if we voted this down, couldn't we just send the bill directly to the school district and say, hey?
This isn't, this isn't a part of the benefit district, this is the separate sewer, the city agreed to build on its own to get to the benefit district.
But a no vote would mean that we could pay for it with cash instead of debt?
If you had the cash, yes.
But, but a yes vote means we could still pay for it with cash if we have it.
Right.
However, in just a few minutes, we're going to offer, I don't know, this would fail, to do this, too. So, you know, if you pull out in the next few weeks, and say, never mind, we're not going to fill debt, but once we move, I mean, I'm going to be moving forward with a rating call and whatever, because I need to know.
Yeah, that's my question.
I mean, you, you're.
You cannot, you cannot authorize a project that you don't either have the money sitting in the treasury, or you've authorized it by some type of debt financing.
Cash basis.
You're in violation of cash basis.
Okay.
And we don't have the money sitting in?
Well, you wouldn't do anything else in sewer, ever, I mean, not this year.
Okay. All right. Well, how would council like to proceed with resolution 1866?
I move we adopt resolution 1866, authorizing the design and construction of certain sewerage system improvements and authorizing general obligation bonds to be issued in an amount not to exceed $1,395,000 to pay the cost of such improvements, all pursuant to Kansas statute.
Second. Motion Morrow, second, Broxterman, that we adopt resolution 1866. Morrow?
Yes.
Broxterman?
Yes.
Fotovich?
No.
Freeman?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
1866 passes. New business item number three, consider authorizing the interim city administrator execute an engineering service agreement with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated for the USD 231 School Campus Benefit District project. David?
This is the engineering contract to do the improvements that we've been talking about less, the downstream sewer. This will be all the benefit district project. This will be Grand Street, Center, basically where it ties into Plum Creek, including some intersection improvements at Center. Moonlight, including intersection improvements at Moonlight and Signal. Connecting sewer which runs from the site down to the White Drive, San Terry Sewer, which is pretty much north of Taco Falcon, Happy Park's Chicken, crossing under the tracks, proceeding north, and ultimately tying in with the existing Interceptor Sewer in the Garden Greenway, north of Washington. And then finally, water line, which would be a 12-inch water line parallel on the street project. The total fee is $308,730. In our benefit district estimates, where we were carrying that, figured in about $358,980, that's the number we're carrying for the budget, so we're under that. This figures out to about, total construction cost, about seven, less than seven and a half percent of construction. The work would be began as soon as possible and would be completed, I know the contract calls for completion on July 23rd, we're meeting today, they're going to try to accelerate that, so possibly we could do the benefit district at the same time as we're doing our hamster sewer project. Payment would be based on delivery of certain types of plans and schedules laid out from the project, from the contract. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Green is here from SKW as well, if you have questions for him.
Completion date you said was July?
July, 4th, 5th, 6th, and I'm meeting today, we're going to accelerate that as best we can.
So, the engineering came in quite a bit less than the 20 percent that we were, I mean, normally, design costs 20 percent, as I recall.
Well, actually, depending on the project, you can run anywhere from seven and a half to 20. If you have a very small project, you'll see it come in much higher on a percentage basis, since we're talking about, you know, about four, four million dollars worth of work, you know, the percentage drops off. So, the bigger the project, as far as a percentage basis, the lower the fees.
How would council like to proceed?
I move that we authorize the interim city administrator to execute an engineering service agreement with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren, Inc., for USD 231 School Campus Benefit District project in the amount of $308,730.
I have one other question.
We gotta, we need to have a second.
Second.
Motion Harrison, excuse me, motion Broxterman, second Harrison, that we authorize the interim city administrator to execute an engineering service agreement with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren for the project. Mr. Fotovich?
How do we reconcile this with our policy to get, you know, multiple bids on things like this?
In the annexation agreement, we agreed to take the engineer that was working with the school district when they're going there, in the interest of expedite project. So, we've already agreed to accept Schaefer, Klein, and Warren as part of the annexation.
There is a motion on the floor, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. New business item number four, consider adopting resolution number 1867, authorizing the offer for sale of certain general obligation notes and bonds of the city of Gardner, Kansas. Laura?
Okay. Back to what I was saying about a variable that we didn't have in October, and we didn't even have last week. First of all, you know, we're selling temporary notes of benefit district, we just talked about all those projects. And then, in addition to that, it is, Springstead routinely monitors our debt for chances to refinance, and with the assistance of them, Springstead, staff has concluded that this would be a good time to refinance the very large KDHE revolving loan that we had for the Kiltig Waste Water Treatment Plant. That was a 20-year loan, it was 28, 20 million and change, 20 million 78,000. And there's still about $13,000 of that left. The Government Finance Officers Association has the recommended practice that you can realize net present value savings of leasing over 3 percent is a good deal. And Springstead estimate is six, over 6 percent net present value savings, and we're talking about $910,000 in interest costs. Now, we sell our debt competitively, so on the day of the sale, it might be 900, 890, 880, or it might be a million. So, that's just how it works. But the estimate is far above what's recommended good practice, and the interest cost savings is significant. And this goes back to a variable that was introduced into the sewer fund that we, that positively affects rate increases. We may not have to do as much in the out years or whatever, this is a very big deal. And actually, it's, the savings is front-loaded, so we're saving the most right now while we need it the most. And when things start dropping off, it, it's still $900,000, although of course, plus, probably plus, that's a conservative estimate. So, it's efficient to add this in while we're doing the school benefit district, because then you only have to pay Moody's once, and Springstead once, and Bond Council once.
So, do we get any benefit from a flexibility standpoint, management of the sewer infrastructure by not having the revolving loan? Or is it, is it really no, no issues in that?
I'm sure I understood the question.
In other words, if we have, if we have state revolving loan funds, we must provide reports at a certain time, or we must do this at a certain time, or is there any, is there any additional benefit that we would realize by doing this?
We'll have to do those things, whether you issue general obligation debt or KDHE, they all require audits and proper financial records.
Okay.
I think, I think possibly, if you go with the state revolving loan, then you'd probably be subject to Davis Bacon provisions.
And the other thing would be state revolving loans are exempt from your debt capacity limit, but we're nowhere near our limit, so it doesn't, that's for government, so it doesn't really, that's really no benefit either. And you're not planning on issuing anything at that time, anyway.
So, we issued this debt initially for $20 million 78,000, is that right?
20 million 78,700.
And what date, what was the date of issue on that?
Well, it changed. It was initially effective January of 2000, and then it was amended in 2001, and again in 2002, because as the project principal increased, the state lets you just fully keep a bond for it.
So, we did it, I mean, we, we just redid it every year?
Well, they did it as the project cost changed. Other words, there was an estimate in 2000, and then it went up a little bit in 2001, and up a little bit in 2002, and the final figure was 20 million 78,700.
And what was the payout, I mean, how many years of?
20 years, and there's no change in that. It's, the maturity will be exactly the same as it was under the original, and we still have this interest savings.
So, it doesn't start over from the point?
No, we're not, no.
And what was the interest rate difference?
It was 3.3 before, and it's estimated at 1.95 now. Those years, that's why, because it, you know, it used to be KDHE was the really good way to go, because it was low interest rate, and they're very flexible, and obviously, and it's for an economy, and there is some benefit to low interest rates if you have a reason to borrow or refinance.
And so, the 900,000 that we saved, how much of that is, I mean, how much goes to the underwriting and all that?
That's net present value, that is, that is minus all the cost of issuance.
And what is all the cost of issuance? I'm just curious what they?
I did not bring that with me, I can get it to you.
I mean, is it 50 percent more than that, or?
Oh, no. Roughly.
10 percent?
2 percent, roughly.
Of the 900,000, not?
No, of the par.
Which is 13 million.
I, I would feel better, rather than throwing numbers out, I could go get it 10 seconds.
You said, oh, you can't go get it 10 seconds. I'm just, I mean, if anybody else is interested in that, I'd kind of like to know.
Estimate, I don't, I'm sure they gave me estimate of cost of issuance, because they're saving net present value.
You said there was 13,000, I wrote down 13,000 remaining, but I think you meant 13,300.
13, sorry, yes, I did. There's a million roughly outstanding, because what they're doing is they're calculating two calls, and they have to give with 60 days notice to KDHE, you have to figure out the interest to call. It's not set up quite like general obligation debt, it's calculated differently.
So, the cost of issuance is 260,000?
Possibly, I would need to go check, but that's the down rule of thumb, I don't think it was quite that high, usually it's something more like 1.3, 1.4, 1.6, somewhere in there.
There's no other, no other things that we would need to know about that? I mean, 900,000 doesn't link to the mortgage?
That's your interest cost, that means it doesn't, this is a, basically, if you didn't enter term, it's maturing exactly the same time, it's less interest. To the tune of roughly 900,000.
And the, and the payment is?
Significantly less, 100,000 a year in the first few years. It, the debt was backloaded before, so it increased every year.
And that stays the same?
No, I didn't go with that, because it was, we need the savings for the front side.
Okay, so.
In these few years before things start dropping off. I'm trying to mitigate your rate increases that we were just talking about.
So, what happens, when does it start getting painful again, then?
It doesn't, not for this.
I thought you said the front end, it was front end.
It's just higher, the savings is greater in the front end, this is a positive savings every year.
And so, what impact will that have on the, on the, the rates?
The out years you were talking about, it mitigates it, but 1 percent increase is roughly 30,000, and we're talking about savings in the neighborhood of 90 to 100,000 every year. But can I say that that will mitigate it 3 percent? No, I can't, because there's other variables involved. But, but it certainly doesn't hurt. This is kind of a no-loss deal here.
How would council like to proceed with resolution 1867?
I move we adopt resolution number 1867, authorizing the offer of sale for certain general obligation notes in the city of Gardner, Kansas.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second, Morrow, we adopt resolution 1867. Harrison?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Broxterman?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Fotovich?
Yes.
1867 passes. Thank you, Laura. Okay. Walt Buckles, I think his name was, from GSPI, sent.
Yes.
One eight six seven passes. Thanks, Laura. Okay, um, Walt Buckles, I think his name was, from G S P I sent, uh, some information that's been printed out and equipped before you. Uh, you also have another document on the freight district.
Yes, Mayor and Council, just to, prior to use some information, prior to next week's work session, the city, um, has been working with, uh, K dot, um, the city of Ederton, Johnson County, Mid-American Regional Council, on an opportunity to do some planning for a twenty-one square mile area of Southwest Johnson County as it pertains to, um, the opening of the intermodal in the next couple of years. So, we'll go into more detail on that, but I wanted to give you the, the, the kind of graphical image of what the areas that, um, this group has been talking about, and then the information on the page behind that is kind of what the scope of the proposed plan is. The folks from K dot will be here on Monday to go over that in more detail, and you'll have information in your packet. I just wanted you to have that, so that you could look at it, um, in color, so. If you have any questions, once you get your packet done, certainly feel free to give me a call, and, um, try to answer them as best I can before next Monday, but the folks from K dot will talk about why this is important, so.
Which, which area is it that we're going to be talking about?
What's on the map?
Everything, everything in the...
Within the dotted lines?
In the dashed line, the black dashed line.
And, and what are they, they're calling that a freight corridor, huh?
That would be correct.
Wow. Great district.
And then, just one other item that, um, we handed out to you this evening, it's a eleven by seventeen, um, printout, that's, um, for the meeting next Monday, too, because we couldn't include that in the, the packet, in a way that you could print it, and we read it on our printers, so the only reason it's in there, um, is that I'll come out with the packet, so. Trying to help you visually for next Monday.
Uh, Mayor, do you know, um, with the G S P I information, is this, is this what's coming, or is there some more? I know he had mentioned possibly getting several case studies that might be relevant to what we're looking at, and if this is it, and if it's not real comfortable with Gardner, just hoping there might be something popping up.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there are some other documents that may be forthcoming.
Okay, great.
So... Staff?
Well, just a, uh, in the, Mr. Press's, uh, weekly update, last week, we had an item under Public Works about the closure of the intersection of one hundred and sixty-seventh and Moonlight later this week for a waterline repair. With the inclement weather coming up, we're going to delay that until next week.
Okay. Counsel? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move...
Second. Motion Harrison, second Morrow, that we adjourn, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. David, have you got one?
I'm just asking. I was going to ask, but it was going to be something we didn't anticipate.